I never see one happy.
It's like, man.
We got it out a minute, I suppose it was for the plan.
No.
Oh, we're in.
It's really pretty. We have to wait.
That's usually not that big. It'd be like, it's almost like a saying, where you just couldn't see them.
I wonder. I don't know.
So like.
Okay, being six o'clock, are we ready, Gary?
Yeah.
I'd invite all of you to stand for the Fledge Allegiance and please mute or turn off your cell phones. At Fledge Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to thank you all for attending this evening and start with our agenda. Patty, please, Rocco.
Done.
Here.
Wanda, here.
Ryan.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
John.
Here. Next item on the agenda is any commissioners have any financial conflict of interests?
I do not.
It would not do for.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I have one with part two of claims, and I will abstain.
Okay. And next item, approval of the agenda for this evening?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add for executive session, personnel as well. And then I move to approve what, that correction.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, and I also have a second by Dan and a second by Ryan. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. It's now time for public comment. Public comment is time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of remaining speaking time. Are there any public comments? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Our first item on the agenda, six-ten. They're here, we don't need to wait till six-ten. Wellmark County Health Insurance Quote. And I'd like, for our public viewers, this is the first quotes that we are receiving for our county health employees. Thank you. Will. This is going to be an ongoing process for the next thirty to sixty days, that will be.
You need to turn it. We'll quote you on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I'm Amanda Shaper, I'm a Senior Account Manager at Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. Thank you for having us today. My team leader, Alice Wilson, is one who handed the books out to my little Anna White. So within your book here that you have, you have a lot of information, we're not going to get to all of it today. But I do want to talk a little bit about Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. I know you were with us previously. So you are familiar about our eighty years of reliable customer service, our amazing client support, and our underwriting team who reviews your data at renewal time. And when we got your quote, to help keep you, your renewals sustainable for the future, we want to keep it stable over the long term. We know Wellmark is not in the business of buy business, so we aren't always the cheapest. You'll see that within our quotes, but we know that we are the most reliable, dependable partner for you to help with your members. And we're here to help you transition your members to Wellmark. As we know, you don't have an option to renew with Medica, so you're kind of in that part of who you move to. We know you have to transition, so who do you partner with? So what I'd like to have you go to in that first part of your book, it's our standard proposal that goes into a lot of information about Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield, which you are familiar with because it talks about improving care in every community, all the way to member engagement. So there, within this book, there's more detailed tabs about member engagement and everything. But I do want you to go to the Why Wellmark tab, and that's where we'll start. Because then after our meeting, if you have questions, you can always reach out. But this is the Why Wellmark tab, the first one. This is just going to talk about a little bit of our strategy of what we're doing in our communities today, along with our pharmacy. So Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're improving care in every community, just not our members we insure, but it's everybody else in the communities, down to reservations in rural areas. But also, we're tailoring health plan solutions, personalizing employee care experience. But also, one of our biggest focus for this year is mental health. We know it's a crisis nationwide, so we have programs and resources for your members in our communities for the mental health piece. Then when you go to the next page about Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield's network, your members can go anywhere without referrals, Mayo, Omaha Children's. If you need to, we're in presence in every zip code. We have the connection with Blue Cross Blue Shield Association for all the United States, so that's how we get our credit contracts. And in our area, we have the best discounts to get you your lowest paid dollars that you would see on your plan, plus your members would pay less, especially in multi-deductible health plan that your members are on. But we also know within pharmacy, pharmacy is a big spend, we all know that. Probably ten years ago, some of you might remember, your pharmacy trend was probably like ten to fifteen percent of your dollar spend. Now it's getting to that twenty to twenty-five percent. So we see it as a carrier, but our self-funded clients see it as well. So what can we do to help bring that cost down? We have implemented some programs this last year called Prudent RX. It's a copay specialty program that members can utilize on specialty drugs that they would get it at zero dollar cost here on your copay plans. But that brings us savings to those members to make sure they can access those drugs. But also, we have a biosimilar strategy where we want to bring with drugs such as Humira. That's a pretty costly medication. We have that as not covered, and our preferred is the biosimilar, can save you thirty-five dollars per member just on that medication alone. So we do have a biosimilar strategy that we're doing, and Stolar is the next biosimilar that's coming out in 2025 that would bring us savings as well.
They say thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I think it's thirty-five hundred dollars.
Thirty-five hundred, yes.
I wanted to make sure we noted that correction, sorry.
Thank you. And then we know that we've used for our 2025 contract with CBS, we have renegotiated through a request for proposal with them. We have used the power behind our numbers with Blue Cross Blue Shield Association, since we're so big with our numbers, to get the best-in-class discounts with CBS for 1125 and forward, which will bring you the best in discounts and savings. Your members will pay less, but it will also help our pharmacy trend go downward versus upward. So we use our numbers, but we're also wanting to make sure our hometown pharmacies are supported. So that is also one of our big initiatives, is with our 1125 contract with CBS, is to make sure those small community pharmacies can survive. And then as we go, and we also know as an employer for your county, you have to deal for your members of their physical health, career health, social, financial, community, and emotional health. So you guys have a lot in your plates. But we have resources for all of those categories that we can help you with and partner with. From on our My Wellmark, there's a BWell 24/7, they can contact a nurse and help navigate care. Blue 365 are all your discounts for wellness and other resources as well. We have Pregnancy Support Program alone with other care management programs to help hopefully not have those high-risk pregnancies, but also just support if a high-risk pregnancy would happen. And then we have the Free Identity Protection. But the one important thing that I want to talk about is we do on our My Wellmark, a member has the option to do an anxiety and depression screening, just like they would do in the office at a doctor, but a shortened version. They can self-refer based, self-refer to a behavioral health care management person that we have on our team, but also based off their answers, that could direct them directly to that behavioral health nurse as well. So it can help navigate any mental health, behavioral health issues that they may be navigating and not know how to get to care. So those behavioral health coaches can help navigate which direction they need to go, if they do need to see the urgent behavioral health right away, or if they just need to get connected with a counselor or therapist. So that just got brought on in May of 2024 that we implemented for our behavioral health team. Now I know you guys want to probably look at the numbers. With being a county, you are very conscious on price. So the pricing tab is where I'd like you to go to next. And I'm just watching the time here, so if we have any questions along the way, feel free to ask. But if you open, there's a, yes, I see you're all full in there. So what you'll see in this chart, the first three columns are dark blue, and that's your Medica plan to date. Then as you go across, you're going to see the forty-five hundred, high deductible plan, and the lighter blue. Light yellow is the fifty-five hundred, and the pink is the sixty-three fifty. There are two in each because we quoted you two different formularies. We have a complete formulary and also a value plus formulary. The value plus does bring us savings compared to the complete because it's kind of restricting some of those preferred brands that are more expensive. So we're just bringing you a savings to the plan, but still giving your members a lot of options. And your eyes will probably go down to the bottom when you compare to your current Medica plan. The forty-five hundred is not competitive at all, as I believe that's kind of been historical. Not many people are enrolled in it today. But our fifty-five hundred plan and the sixty-three fifty are not too bad. We're coming in a little bit lower on the fifty-five hundred plan and then just a little bit higher on the sixty-three fifty when comparing to your current 2024 Medica rates. We quoted as close as we could to your plan design, so you can kind of see a comparison in this chart as well for your deductibles, copays, out-of-pockets, and that sort. And I know as a county, Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield has quite a few cities and counties that we insure today. We have a lot of references available, if that's something you would be interested in hearing from any of our clients, they are open to giving references. Let us know, we can send you their contact information if you are interested in that. But I wanted to pause there, are there any questions from any of you that you have on the information I went over or the quote?
I don't have any questions at this time. I appreciate you laying this out when you did, and it's very informational to us. And this is just the beginning of our process, and I appreciate you giving this to us early. In the past, it's been kind of a struggle because it's been presented to us in a later format, so I appreciate that. And we will certainly take this into consideration, and if there are any other questions from the commission? At this time?
Okay, I'll just leave you with a few other things, just so you know what's in the rest of the book.
You have plenty of time.
There's more information about Prudent RX that I spoke about, the specialty drug copay, that's the next tab after pricing. And then it goes into our formulary options. As I mentioned, we quoted you two, the complete and the value plus. It goes into more details about the value of each of them. But I also included the ACA Preventive Drug List, that's in there, and also if you wanted to include the HSA Preventive Drug List. Based off the summary plan documents we received, we couldn't tell if you had that today or not. But if you wanted it, we could do that, where it's certain preventive drugs on your high deductible health plan that are covered at like no cost. We can, it's not in your quote today, but we could do that for you. So that's an option. The member engagement tab is multiple resources that your members would have access to while under Wellmark.
Well, one thing that I would like to stress here is that you're directing this quote directly from Wellmark.
Correct.
So there's no agent fee or anything like that involved in this to us.
So our base rate, so as long as, I do know there were some agents that are quoting, you'll probably see them in the next couple of weeks. Our base rates are the same, as long as we quoted the same plans. If anybody requested like plan design changes, that could change the pricing. But if we do your three plans and that's what we're quoted, the only difference would be you would see like a commissioner or consultant be built in, that's with the consultant bringing their value. The one thing Wellmark would not be able to do with a direct group is if you wanted quotes from other carriers, we would not be able to assist you with that with being a direct group.
I understand that.
So yeah.
But for our employees, basically the difference is in the past, our agent probably helped with clients' claims, where today, we're going to have to go to the Wellmark portal to file any additional claims or anything like that. I just want to make that clear, that that's one step that we would eliminate is the agent.
With going direct.
Going direct, so.
Yep.
Are you seeing more of that, like direct to the company and non-native agents or?
We have a decent handful of mix of both for cities and counties, but other groups in general. There are some that are direct, because we do have some good resources and reporting available for groups that we can share.
Sure.
And we would, like me as the account manager, would just end up being kind of your consultant.
Okay, so if we went with you and went direct and an employee had a question or something, they could go to you and still?
Yes, they would come to you, you have an accounting.
Okay.
Regardless, it would be myself, and so it would be myself and also a service rep that are dedicated to you. And then we also have connections to senior reps within customer service to reach out to get more details on things.
Sure.
We usually try to direct the member to customer service first because we do have a great customer service team with a lot of history and knowledge. But we do know sometimes they can't get their answer on the first time, or maybe they just didn't understand the answer. So it can come to you, so then it comes to us, and we research it and help. But yes.
Yeah, that's good to know that that is available.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you.
Question?
Okay.
Any other meetings, like those types of things?
For open room, we can help you with that.
I have a question, looking at your chart, under fully insured rates, it says type of contract rate structure? Two-way, four-way, what's a four-way?
Four-way is where you have single family, but, so today you have a two-way, single and family only. So if somebody is just employee spouse, they're getting the family rate. So it was requested to be quoted at a four-way, so it includes the four tiers, single family, employee spouse, employee children. So if there is someone that just had that employee plus one children, that would have a special rate. If you did want to look just at the two-way, we can, that does save a little bit on how it's spread apart from each other.
Okay.
Good questions.
Do you see the family rate go different?
Well, it makes a difference if you have eight children.
Yes.
No, no further questions?
Yeah.
I appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
And glad that you're willing to quote direct.
Excellent.
Next item, Avera. You probably understood that you were going to be in a.
We did, we did. You had two locals, so.
There you go.
It's all right here.
Insurance is fine. Thank you.
Well, hello, my name is Julianne Andreessen, and I'm a Business Development Executive for the Avera Health Plans. With me, I have Jordan Anderson, he is our Sales Director, and he also passed out your packets. If you go ahead and open that up on the right-hand side or left-hand side, you're going to see the agenda items that we are going to go through today. And then the second sheet is going to be your current rates with Medica and then our proposed Avera Health Plan rates. And on the far right-hand column, you'll see the percentage change in your current rates with Medica and then our Avera rates on the side. So it's going to go from that minus nineteen, minus fifteen, and then minus nineteen and a half. And overall, if you combine that decrease in all those rates across all three plans, that percentage change is going to be over eighteen and a half percent, given that all employees stay on the plans that they are on now. So the first thing I'm going to talk about is savings, we'll then talk about Avera's network, and then the value add that we have included in these quotes. I provided Patty the rate sheets last week, so if you guys want to see plan designs or change plan designs, we can always go into that later. But what I want to focus on is, so with that eighteen and a half percent decrease in your health insurance premium, that is saving the county thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars monthly and annually. That's going to come out to a hundred and sixty-six dollars over the course of the year. Given again that all employees stay on those plans, that number would change a little bit if you have some membership change, but that's about the number in savings that we're looking at. On top of that, we are also offering an eight point nine percent second-year rate cap, meaning next year at renewal, this time of year, worst-case scenario, the increase you're going to see to those rates in that middle column is going to be an eight point nine percent increase. So again, your current rates that you're paying, you're still going to be paying less through the end of 2026 with that rate cap that we are offering. Do you guys have rate questions so far?
I like that the number's going down.
I have a question, but I'll wait till more detail on your presentation.
Sure, sure, okay. So going into our Avera network, as of November first, 2023, Avera Health Plans partnered with United Healthcare, and this partnership expanded our network and gave our members access to providers nationally, meaning that anywhere outside of our Avera service area, members can utilize the United Healthcare Options PPO network. So if they're seeking care at Omaha or Mayo, they are allowed to go there, and they can use their Avera ID card.
You just brought up my position where I got.
That's what I figured, yeah, what's that?
That's new, that's new, because traditionally that hadn't been the case, so now they.
So correct, that went into effect last November, November first, 2023.
So I'm going to spill on another word, Sanford Health affiliates or doctors. If you have, if we have an employee that needs to, that has been going to a doctor specialist, that's only available at Sanford Health, is what are your, what's the availability for their access to this health plan?
So Sanford is not in our network, but we do have our care coordination team that will assist in any transition that needs to happen from Sanford to a participating provider. And that doesn't have to be right away, that can be over the course of ninety days. And if it's someone that is only in, I'll let Jordan finish.
So John, I want to clarify your question.
Come up there, am I the?
Yeah. So John, I want to clarify your question. You mentioned something that only Sanford could offer as far as a specialty goes, is that?
That's my understanding with employees, because we've had this discussion in the past. And if it's a specialist that Sanford is, that Avera doesn't provide, I don't know what that would be, but.
Yeah, so.
But we have people that say, well, we can't change to Avera because doing a Sanford doctor, they won't pay.
Yep, so what Sanford and Avera Health have both done within each other's health plans is allow for kind of this quid pro quo. Whereas if we have a specialty that they don't have, behavioral health, for example, we have very specialized behavioral health, where they will gap exception in a member into our network and allow that to be treated as in-network. Very similarly, if we don't have, if we can't provide something from a contracted network contracted provider, we would be able to have this gap exception and allow that to be treated at Sanford's, at their specialist as in-network for your employee.
And I brought that question up because it was asked of me recently, and evidently that was not the case a few years back. And it's only for the viewing audience that I bring this up.
Did that answer your question, John?
Exactly.
Is there a follow-up?
Well, yeah, just so we're clear, if we have some, do you need to know what kind of Sanford specialists that they have, that they need, that they want, that they'd like to stay with? So if we choose this plan, that they can go to those Sanford books?
It would really be if the sub-specialty is not offered by a contracted provider. So if we can't provide it with our network contracted physicians and specialists, then we would make a gap exception because we want to make sure that that individual is provided the care that they need.
Well, I think what they're asking, at least of me, is they want to know that they can have their Sanford specials. And then as long as we're talking about it, their concern is Avera does not offer coverage for birth control.
We do cover birth control as part of the Affordable Care Act.
Do you?
That's part of our, yes, we do.
Okay.
So that's going to be covered for your plan. Our employee plan, different story, because we are a religious-based entity, so we don't provide it to our own employees. But to your employees and their dependents, we'd be able to do that. To go back to your original question around the specialist, if it's, let's just say it's an OB-GYN. We do have contracted OB-GYNs, so that would, they would need to be able to see a contracted OB-GYN, not a Sanford OB-GYN. Does that make sense?
It does, but I think they're concerned that they'll lose the specialists that they've worked with for years.
It's a fair assessment.
Okay, move on.
Any other network concerns or questions?
In the local area, obviously, Yankton, we have Avera, who gets the most things available within the community. And then in addition, Sioux Falls, Mayo Clinic, and then Omaha is all available for specialty care, just.
Yeah.
That's my question, thank you.
Yeah, the last thing I'll touch on that we're offering within our quote is our value add. So we are proposing that all employees will be offered a free Great Life Fitness Membership or a free Avera Sacred Heart Wellness Membership, employee only, and these are valued at sixty-four ninety-nine fifty-four oh nine monthly. So a great perk if you have employees that are interested in utilizing any of those. Another thing we're offering is a free Planet Heart Screening to every male employee forty and above, ages forty and above, and females forty-five and above. These Planet Heart Screens scans for signs of early cardiovascular disease and can help lower risk of a heart attack or stroke. And like I said, they're valued at a hundred and twenty-five dollars, and they can help detect that before it may be too late for any of your members. Avera Health Plans, this is a direct quote, and we are committed to assisting you year-round for all your service support, onsite open enrollment support, and you will have a dedicated account manager and a sales operations specialist throughout the entire year.
And the dedicated account manager is going to be the Sioux Falls office?
Yes, it would be Crystal Lee, and you may have worked with her in the past, she's been with us for twenty years.
Okay, any further questions from the commission?
No, I know when we had Avera, the Great Life Fitness Membership was really popular with the employees, from what I remember, the feedback I got. I think that's a good thing. And that's the value, what, if it's sixteen-five bucks a month, times the number of whatever, that's pretty significant value as well, so.
There's some other flyers.
Would Blue Cross be willing to throw that in also?
We do have the partnership of Great, like we have a Blue 365 discounts that have Orange Theory, Active Bar, any kind of fitness and other ones, and I can get you a list of what those are.
And we do have Anytime here in Yankton. Okay.
Thank you, guys, very much.
I'd ask.
Negotiating.
What else do you want?
Anybody want to lower your numbers?
Is it a big one?
Yep. Okay, I would like to thank both of you for taking the time to get these quotes figured out in a timely manner. And really appreciate you coming here, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're good.
You're morning.
Thank you.
So at this time, then, we've got on the agenda is approved road broom bid. Mike, you're going to come up and discuss a little bit about that?
First, we'll do the Rumble Strip Agreement. A few years back, I applied for Rumble. A few years back, I applied for rumble strips, mainly on the, our highways that join to the state highways as we come up to the stop sign.
It's a good, good safety feature, right? Because there's almost always a stop, well, there is always a stop sign with those.
Yeah, and also I added on some of them spots on our roads, you know, Taper Lesville Road, Utica Lesville Road, the four-way stops, I added them to them spots too.
Will this be at all, you know, paying county intersections intersecting with the state highway? Or we're just going to do some, or what's?
Wherever they're not.
Wherever they're not, because there is some, no, I think it's a good, good thing.
And it's, there's no cost to the county on that, so.
Even better.
Right.
Right.
Thank you for applying for that, that's a good deal. Do we need?
We need a motion on that?
Yep, need approval.
Move approval of the rumble strip agreement.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Wanda. Further discussion?
I just again like to thank, like to thank Mike and John and Wanda for this. This is an agreement that's not going to cost the county anything, but it very well could save somebody's life. So appreciate you guys looking into these types of things. Good project.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Next would be approved road broom bid. Well, we had a, we already had the one broomed there that we were demoing. Well, then we got the second bid. Well, I called the guy and I'd be like, I told him I would like to demo that one. So I'm going to hold off on having you guys approve either bid until the next meeting. And for the meantime, we can demo the other broom and.
Just demo them.
Just demoing on all.
Unfortunately, we can't do that.
And this, this quote, now it's used too, so it shouldn't be less.
There you go. So yeah, for, be the first meeting, if I'm real, we'll have.
Do we, we have a broom here?
We do.
It's just time to go?
I would say probably eight years ago, we had to replace a gearbox. And the only way to decline was down in Florida, so it's time.
Time to go. We'll have to probably sell that purposely.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Mike, appreciate it.
We're going to postpone the approval of the road brooms.
And Brian had a prior engagement, so he could be here, but you have his.
We have his report. Can we approve that without it being? I've had a request of motion.
Do we want to approve that or we want to?
Well, do you have any questions?
Well, we probably won't, we don't have to approve those at this meeting, do we?
We don't, but.
Just, I mean, we have an opportunity for the next one.
You can.
I don't, I don't have any questions looking over at the data.
Yeah, I, I don't either, I mean, it's.
Because we can all read.
Most of us.
And they're out there. I mean, I would, I would at this time, I guess I would ask for a motion to approve.
I'm of approval.
Of the registered D's quarterly report?
Of the registered D's quarterly report.
I would second.
So I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? I know Dan wants, you know, you want to hear, but, and we can, you can ask him in any.
Sure, I mean, because he usually asks, I'm saying that if we approve it, we'd still let him come in if he wants to report on that.
And he said he would.
He has a lot of good information and statistics, so I don't have any problem approving it.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Gary.
Good evening, second reading applicants requesting to rezone a parcel in rural transitional district of Lakeside Commercial District per Article eighteen, Section eighteen oh nine, and Article twenty, Section twenty oh three. Set property is legally described as the north two acres of the west eleven rods, excluding lot H three of the southwest quarter, the northeast quarter, Section fifteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. E nine one one address is three one one one, West A Street, Yankton.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is there, can, can we put a condition or anything like that on this rezone? That if, and I guess this is not a CUP, so probably not, so never mind, never mind my question.
I think it says.
What's the rest of the question?
Why don't you, what's the concern?
Concern is, my concern is, is if we approve this rezone and they apply for a CUP.
They won't need to, it'll be an accepted permitted use then at that point.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, I think what you're getting at is a rezone. And according to, you know, our zoning ordinance, I'd put twenty of granting your petition for amendment or change the county commission, they prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards in conformity with the ordinance. So if you have something that you would, you know, you would like to put on there, I know Ryan brought up a good point about the bike path, I think we should put that in there at this time. And, and that was a good, good comment he made, is there's a lot of heavy traffic there. What are we going to do to, you know, ensure safety of pedestrians? Maybe, you know, maybe we just put that in there as, is that kind of what you'd recommend? Because they won't come in front of us at any other time.
The only concern about putting a condition on a rezone is that, or a rezone is a law. It'll change to our law. And if you put a condition and if the condition's not met, then what do we have? We have this quasi-zoned property that has a condition, as soon as it's met, it becomes another zone. And so we have to be careful about that. It doesn't, like a conditional use permit has an expiration built into it. If it's not, if it's not used or conditioned.
Yeah, if you approve the rezone, what are you going to do? Yeah, if there's a notice of zoning violation per se.
Rob, what would you recommend in a rezone? That there seems like there might be a little bit of concern about traffic. You know, at least if that's mentioned in the minutes and in this rezone, was that what, what would your advice be for us?
You mean just mentioning it part of the sort of the discussion?
Yeah, for example, rezoning, rezoning this property to a Dollar General is the plan. Once it's rezoned, it's going to be a permitted use, so they're just coming to get a building permit. But there is a little bit of concern about the traffic. And, and there's that bike path there. What would you recommend we do in this case?
I think just bringing it up and making it part of the discussion would be sufficient.
Okay, and it, and it says in our zoning that we can, we can prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards. Maybe we just have something to say that, you know, we foresee traffic being an issue and we're recommending this, you would be fine with that?
I would.
Okay. Gary, would that sound good?
Yeah, that will be fine.
Was that, was that your concern, traffic as well? Uh, no, not really, I guess. I'm, I'm just thinking that maybe someday there's going to be a water treatment, not a facility, but a possibility of something going on down there. I would like to see us start making people hook up to it, not giving them an option.
I don't think we would that one.
Rob, would that be something we could mention in there? That if a sanitary system becomes available, we would recommend that they hook up to that? Or what would change?
And Dan, you're referencing just bringing it up during conversation or making it a condition under the stone?
You know, I don't know, I guess I'm looking to your advice on, on that. I know it's, it's not a conditional use permit, it's something else. So what, I mean, what would you recommend?
This is my concern, is if, if that ever becomes available in the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, a hundred years, not giving people an option to sit there and say, oh, I already built a septic tank, so I don't want to hook up to this, I don't want to pay for city sewer or whatever. I, I just think we need to start, if there's any possible way, we need to start moving towards that direction.
Yeah, well, generally, what you would do is, is my suggestion would be is that if that's something we want to work towards, you put something in the ordinance that say, it says if you're within six hundred and sixty feet of the, of the line, you're required to hook in. That's, that's how you generally do this kind of thing.
I think that's a problem for when, when that happens.
Right.
Because, I mean, that's a problem throughout the whole area down there.
It is. And if you let people build down there, they're never going to.
In order to be in work, you'd have to get everyone on it.
Because currently, yeah, they don't have enough customer base to where these septic's an issue, so.
But what was the, what was the decision, so?
Rob, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, you said we could, we could maybe mention that in the minutes?
I think you already did.
And just kind of mention it, and that's about the best we can do.
Does that have to be in the motion?
No.
And just be it's in the minutes, yeah.
It's on the video.
And then it's, I mean, then it's going to be up to you when they come into that building permit. Try to just say like, these are the things that we are concerned about and you should address.
We can call Mr. Das too, if you want.
I, I feel like they're so, they're very small and minor that they're not going to be big issues. I would hope they were very cooperative in that.
Yeah, I, I believe so.
Good comments.
Do I would ask for a next question?
Mr. Trump, let's ask for a public comment.
Public comment on this second reading on the rezone. Seeing none, public comment is closed. I would, at this time, request for a motion to approve the rezone for DGOGYY Yankton oh five two four twenty twenty four LLC.
I'd move to approve that without saying it over.
I'm sorry. I have a motion by one, a second by Don. Further discussion?
Just reiterate one more time, you know, we would hope in the future they'd work with us if there are any issues with the trail and sanitary system, so.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Section Office Quarterly Report, Katie.
Good evening, I'm Katie Doty, for each program advisor. Hopefully you guys all have the report in front of you. So a little bit more than a quarterly report, but just some things to touch on. Back in April, in the end of the school year, finished up Lego Robotics with Stuart. We tried a new program this year called Food Fun for H. I had eight families participate in that. I had really good feedback from that. Each month, they got a set of recipes and different facts. Like one was on napkin folding and table manners and things like that. And then if they did the survey to go along with it, they got a utensil to use for the next month's recipes. So we did that for four months. Then starting in May, really, we get going with our busy season. And we had our babysitting clinic at the library again. And fourteen youth attend that class this year. And then had a floral arrangement workshop in June for our four H kids. And I did that along with Audra from Hyde Pikers. And then we started garden club at the Boys and Girls Club. There we teach them about gardening, nutrition facts about gardening, or the produce that comes from the garden. And then we take care of that all summer long, we meet twice a week. As you'll see later on down the line, start when the school year starts. Then we do garden club suppers. So the produce that we get from our suppers, or from the produce we get from the gardens, we make suppers for the Boys and Girls Club. So we had that today, in fact. And then we had our usual fashion review, special foods, public presentations, all at the office in June. August, we had our county fair, we had around five hundred and fifty indoor projects and around a hundred and ten animals exhibited. Later on in August was state fair, where I took about a hundred and thirty-five indoor projects up. Our youth showed altogether around forty animals, and they did five youth in action activities. And then right after I get back from state fair, field to table with Valley Ag, where I helped facilitate the dairy station. And we had six hundred and sixty-seven youth come through in those two days I was there. I helped get Yankton School District to attend this year, so that was a big positive for that event. And just some things that we're looking forward to as we move into our new year, which started October first, we have a total of fifty-eight volunteers and members already signed up, which is pretty impressive. Usually they take a little while to start re-enrolling, so I'm happy with those numbers.
Katie, can I ask a question? The applicator testing, is that for spraying weeds and things like that? Is that something that you're teaching or administering, administering the test for, is that for the state or?
Yep, so the tests are through the Department of Ag. That used to be the administrative assistance job. I said I'd take it over until we could hopefully hire somebody for the simple fact that there's a lot of people that do want to come to Yankton and take their classes here and their tests here.
Is that some type of agreement that we have with the Department of Ag to do that? Or is that just how it's always been? I guess I'm kind of just curious about that.
So I'm sure there's some sort of agreement, being so new, I don't know.
Could you look that up?
Yeah.
I could just speak, you know, the state is, is very good about pushing responsibilities onto the counties and just.
I know a lot of counties. A lot of counties do provide this testing, just helps get, get it out there.
Appreciate that, thank you.
And other things that we're looking forward to, we started Food Fun for H again. This time around, it's all around the world, so October's theme was Germany. Doing another chicks in the classroom, planning our recognition event, getting ready for twenty twenty-five county fair already, and some other projects getting lined up before spring. Any questions? I guess I just have one more thing to add, in case you guys weren't aware yet. I will be going on maternity leave in February. So I was hoping that we could eventually discuss getting another person hired for my office, because there are still things that will need to be done while I'm gone.
Who is that, who is that, was it Oliver, that guy from the state? Because when he came in and, and took that third person away, he promised us that if we ever needed, you know, assistance, that.
He would provide.
He would provide that, and he promised all of that right here. I mean, is he willing to now, you know, help us out or?
So he's no longer with. However, I know I did send an email once suggesting to you guys, you know, writing to the state, to our director of four H, requesting a state-paid person. Because that would get that connection back in there, not saying that they won't still help us. We, they still help me all the time, but could be getting a second person in the office.
You want to talk to us a little? You you want to talk to us a little bit about our proposal to move locations?
I don't think that's up to her. It's up to the people that own the building.
Correct.
And they've said no.
Well, I think I think that it is up to Katie to, because when when that transfer of that facility takes place.
Mr. Trump.
We we need to bring that into this facility.
I don't think that I don't think that was the question, though. Maybe I misheard the question.
You might have.
My understanding my understanding at this point in time is that the current extension building is no longer going to be a county facility. So therefore, if we're gonna continue as a county to have the extension office and Katie's gonna be our our employee, then that office has got to be moved into this So I don't I don't see where that's really a issue for the 4-H board to decide whether Katie's gonna move into an office in this facility, or if the 4-H board is gonna take over the extension for Yankton County and Katie's gonna stay in that building. So I don't I don't know that, again, I don't know a hundred percent if it's Katie's responsibility, but if if you're gonna continue to be an employee or for us, because Rob, when will that transfer of that deed on that building take place?
Why didn't you say?
Before the end of the year, sorry. Because the the issue for our viewing audience is that the facility that's an extension building on the right now, the deed is it says that Yankton County has to maintain an extension office in that facility. We have the facility here in this building to main to maintain the extension office. However, there's, in my mind, or I think it's a consensus of the county commission, that we do not have to continue to occupy that space on that facility. So we we're willing to host the extension and the 4-H office here in our facility, existing facility. We will not own that property after December first, or December thirty-first, is my understanding.
You know, I don't know if there's enough room anyplace for extension.
We'll make room for extension.
So you're gonna take room away from contact and and all that? Because they.
No.
There's the state's attorney, old state's attorney, that's the contact he's the.
I think it will have to be reimagined, because the way it is now, it's set up, basically as an office hallway with offices on each side, it'll have to be revisited in a fashion. So that contact is over here, and extension is over here.
And the nurse's office put out their store their stuff in there. I store all my foal books, my machines, my ballots I have to keep for twenty-two months that all in those two rooms in the state's attorney's office.
Here's where here's where we're at, is that facility is is costing the taxpayers of Yankton County approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year for maintenance and things like that. If if we could, we if we could rearrange things and the thought process was to move the contact center into that building, continue with a extension, an extension office, that would free up space in in this facility for other projects. The 4-H board decided that they did not want to deal with the contact center in that facility. So therefore, if, in my mind, if Yankton County supposedly owns that building and we can't use it for whatever we want to use it for, then what is the reason that we own that building?
From my understanding in conversation with the contact center my leaders have had is the contact center doesn't believe that we will both stay in that building. And it's not a hundred thousand.
As as it is, as it is already designed, that the storage facility, that the 4-H board and the extension people think that they need to have that. We basically have been in contact with the contact center, and we have a plan that we could use that facility for both. Now, the 4-H board says, no, we do not want the contact center in that facility. So therefore, we're making the decision that we're going to give the building back to the 4-H board. Is that correct? Rob, that's we decided that.
Well, I think they decided they didn't want.
They did not want us to deal deal with the contact center.
They did state that to us, correct?
But I don't think the county pays a hundred thousand.
No, not for maintenance. That's with wages.
That's with wages, yep. The 4-H crew, they pay for snow removal and.
We pay for snow removal. We pay for lawn mowing. We pay for utilities. We pay for insurance. We being the county.
Yeah, but so does the 4-H. They pay.
No, they don't.
The leaders, so you guys give the leaders association that allotted amount, and that helps them pay for some of the maintenance on their grounds and their lawn mowing. The county's maintenance crew does the snow removal for my office and does the lawn mowing, but it's still, I think that amount doing the budget this year was around ten thousand with the for the maintenance on the building.
We could.
Not including utilities.
When does the.
We can get the number for the insurance, the utilities, and the maintenance for both. That should not be hard. It's in the budget.
And irregardless, if if we can't use that facility for county business other than the extension office, then we have to make a decision to what's doing best, make the best decision for the constituents of Yankton County to utilize that building.
And we suggested a smaller office moving in there, too. I mean, that's not a problem. It's just.
We can't we can't move the trade's office into that building. We can't move the auditor's office into that building. Where do we have a smaller office that we could move into that building?
Veteran Services.
That's one little office upstairs.
I know, but that's the only one I can think of.
Yeah.
Offhand.
So that's not gonna free up the space of the of the contact center?
No.
I I think that's the decision that the commission has made.
I I brought it up because one of your directors cornered me.
Did what?
Cornered me in the hallway to ask a question.
I I want to make it clear also that Katie's job is is still here with the county as long as that office is built is in this facility. We're not we're not eliminating the the extension office. We're not eliminating 4-H. We support 4-H as however we we can. It's it's just that that facility, I mean, whether it's ten thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, it's ten thousand dollars that the taxpayers of Yankton County are paying to have a building sitting there that we can't utilize the way we need to have Motion to approve the Extension Quarterly Report.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Ambulance Quarterly Report.
Welcome. Thank you. Good evening, all. Eric, this is the Yankton County EMS Administrator. I had a conversation with Don. I did not corner him. I I did have a conversation with Don and.
He's lively. He's hard to corner.
Yeah. I kind of want to apologize, but explain myself a little bit. My quarterly reports have been sticking to the numbers and trying to be respectful of your folks' time and have not really dove into some of the other things that Yankton County EMS has been doing. So I wanted to give you a quick overview before we jump into the numbers tonight. I actually found out this department had today. Yankton County EMS has been looking at interpretive services that we can use on EMS calls, as well as folks coming in for billing. We've started to have a increased number of people that we just can't visit with. And so not knowing that we had a contract to the county, I was doing some research, and they were really impressed that Yankton County EMS was looking at this, because there's not a lot of EMS agencies in the country that use this type of system. So I need to follow up to see what our system is available to us and make sure that it's HIPAA compliant first and foremost, but that's one of the things we're looking at.
Is that a digital system? I guess.
We can go one, we can either go phone, or we can go video. So we've got tablets in all our ambulances that we do a lot of our EHR and stuff, we have good signatures on, that we'd be able to utilize into our tablets. And it's only a need, as a needed service, so.
Well, I mean, it's the reality of the world we live in today and.
Yeah.
And it's a it's a service that we already provide to the state's attorney's office and.
Rob, is your is it your does it is it a tablet or what is it exactly, your translation services that you have?
It's a real person.
It's a real person. But we also have a dial in.
The dial.
So that'd be a dial.
The dial, yes.
What do they call that?
The.
It's a silly name.
When I was at the NACO, they actually had a booth on this, and that maybe is something we need to look at, is the tablet-based systems, you know, the talk-to-conversion. The reason I say that is is the person on the end of the line, there's there's getting to be so many different people from so many different communities. Is somebody from Argentina speaks Spanish is not the same as somebody from Mexico is not.
It's a different dialect.
And and so what what I'm saying is if you have somebody who speaks speaks Arabic, well, where does he speak? Is it Egyptian? Is it Syrian? Is it Iraqi? There's so many different dialects, and it's that one person can't do that. And and there's there's a system that has over two hundred and seventy-five different languages talk to text, and the reality is, we're gonna spend money, maybe we need to just cover up our bases.
It's called interpretalk.
Yes, yeah. There's a lot of different ones, and maybe we need to do an RFP and and do something like that. And and like you're saying, that's really great, HIPAA compliant and.
Yeah, we'd have to make sure it's HIPAA compliant, and the talk to text for us is tough, because some of the emergent situations we're in, we need to get information quickly. The talk to text drags that entire entire conversation out and will inhibit us providing care and timely service. That's why we're looking at the video component, even a voiceover where they can call in, we can get that. But I'm I'm gonna have to follow up on what the county already has to see if it's something that we can utilize. If not, we'll continue to to pursue that. In the last quarter, we also received the mannequin from our first round of the South Dakota Department of Health Rule grant for EMS. We received just shy of ten thousand dollars for a mannequin to utilize, and we're gonna utilize that to provide education to the first responder agencies throughout the county. It's not just Yankton County. We want to provide it for those first responder agencies that we respond with. We just finished submitting for a sixty-eight thousand dollar grant for round two of that, and we're going to build upon that system of a system that all first responder agencies within the county would be under the same protocols. Everybody knows exactly what they're supposed to be doing. It gives you medication dosing, equipment sizes, and stuff like that, and allow us to also continue education on that. We just submitted, we should hear by the middle of November. The state actually had seven point five million dollars for EMS within the state. The first round, they only utilized one point six. We're hopeful that we'll be able to utilize that. Unfortunately, the grant did not allow for employees, buildings, equipment such as ambulances, such as that. So we found a system that's going to kind of regionalize this our county a little bit better, and hopefully, it'll go through.
Keep us updated on that.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
We're fully staffed. We took a unique turn. You know, Preston Christie, the sheriff, has done a really nice job of lifting up some hierarchies and stuff, and all the candidates that we had apply through hierarchies, none of them have their certification, which has always been a requirement for EMS, whether EMT or paramedic, you had to have the certification before you came onboard. While the sheriff's department, law enforcement, they hire somebody and then send them to academy. The city of Pittsburgh, within the last two months, hired sixteen people off the street that were looking for employment that had an interest in the public service realm. All sixteen went through expedited EMT course, and all sixteen passed. We decided to follow suit with that and try that, and so we actually have hired now our second person. The first one's been through the EMT course. We just need to get them past the test. The second one, where it actually starts in another week, they're coming on as drivers. We get them oriented, and then we run through an expedient EMT class, because they typically, a traditional EMT class, EMT class in South Dakota, four to five months. These will be down to about eight weeks. And so we're gonna see if we can expedite that process, get them onboarded, and one of the two is already talking that if they make it through that EMT, they want to go on to paramedic school at some point in time to further their career in healthcare, so.
And Eric, I think that's great that you're doing that and bringing people on to drive an ambulance and freeing up an EMT app, and then they see if they're gonna like it or not. So I think that's a great way to do that, four to five months to eight weeks. Well, what a what a difference that is, so, great job. Are you teaching that locally, or do they have to go somewhere?
Well, actually, we're gonna do it in-house, and from.
Oh, wow.
The program that I worked with in Las Vegas, we did a reverse classroom. So basically, it's a self-study, and then they have to present to us to make sure we know that they're retaining that information thoroughly, and they will receive tests and stuff.
So that, yeah, they're kind of get hired and driving the ambulance and learning those skills all at the same time?
Yes.
Good idea.
So we're excited to see how that progresses, and I'll follow up with you next quarterly meeting to see where we're at with that. Got the brass tacks of everything. You have the packet that I sent you for twenty twenty-four calls. We have, for the last quarter, we're at five fifty-eight. We're actually down a little bit from twenty twenty-three. The nice part about that is we've mitigated some of those calls that we don't necessarily get paid for. The number of actual transports has increased, even though our numbers have gone down. So revenue generating calls have gone up, but the unnecessary ones have gone down, which is a good thing. And we're not down by too many, but we're still running a fair number. So five fifty-eight this year, five seventy-three last year. The sheriff's department, they implemented a nurse practitioner that comes in for the jail. That's actually mitigated a lot of calls, and Preston and I had some really nice dialogue about that. With that, we rarely go down there anymore. We worked with law enforcement in the community, so we're not just responding to intoxicated individuals for an assessment and then taking them to the hospital, which they don't do much for anyway. They treat them, let them kind of get settled and release them again. Instead, they take them directly to the court. So our call volume's down, but our billable calls are actually up, which is a positive thing all the way around. Number of total transports by month for twenty twenty-four, you can see is three forty-nine compared to last year's three thirty-six. So that's just referencing our billable calls are up. Total number of transfers, we're still at about forty-two, which we've been running actually about the last two years. Our number of transfers in our facility really hasn't declined, and right now, we're in the process, we have a temporary full-time paramedic who's interested in coming on full-time that will fully staff us, and it's getting us to the point where if we could get one more medic in the next couple of months, we probably wouldn't have to utilize nursing services after hours to help with some of those ALS transfers, which is going to help with our bottom line. We just gotta find the right candidate for that. The last sheet that I gave you is actually the charge summary, so you can actually look at the calls that we have. I know Danny brings up quite often our lift assists. In the last quarter, the number of lift assists were thirty-five, so about ten per month. That's.
Is that gone down, or what have you seen that number go?
No, it's maintaining about the same. We've had a couple repeat offenders of that, and we've actually taken the time to reach out to social services to make sure that we can try to mitigate those calls as well and get them involved. We've had a couple of repeat offenders of that and we've actually taken the time to reach out to social services to make sure that we can try to mitigate those calls as well and get them involved, see if we can help out that process. And a couple of times it has, a couple of times we're still working on some other avenues for it. Overall revenue, though, we're still on pace. The beginning of September, we had reported 804,000 that we brought in. Currently, we're showing about 909, so another $100,000. So we're on a pretty good pace to end up the rest of the year and we'll see where it falls.
Eric, on lift assists, what are we at for our charge?
Seventy-five bucks.
And I want to say we did that, is that 2019 or 2020 we did that? Is there, in your recommendation, is that where it needs to be? Do we need to relook at that? What would you recommend? I know it's a service to the community, but, you know, we gotta be competitive too.
I, I think if we leave it where we're at, we're competitive and we're actually going to collect and we're going to get the rate. If you start raising it too much, you're going to end up chasing, spending more man-hours trying to collect it than not. And most agencies in our area are about that 75 bucks. For the ones that are not doing a lot, they may bump it up a little bit, but it's fairly fair rate right now.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions for Eric? I'm just waiting here to watch.
That's why I'm, that's why I're in, is Wanda.
No, I was just going to move to approve the ambulance report.
One, one question, I guess, now, we, we have a collection agency that's collecting old pass bills, how is that?
Of course, we're seeing money come in on a weekly basis from them.
So it was a, they're working out for you?
Yep.
Great, that was my question.
I will reiterate my motion to approve the ambulance quarterly report.
Motion by Wanda, second by Ryan. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Preston?
Good evening, commissioners. So I'm here for the jail and sheriff quarterly reports. I just got back from coaching supply football, so the kids don't listen to me on the field like they do on the streets, but, and I have to cheer for the Vikings, my son's team's the Vikings, so that's pretty tough for me to deal with, but I'm sorry.
Maybe you should all do that.
Yeah.
Maybe you should show up with a gun and a razor.
Well, I did, still don't listen.
They might listen better.
Yeah. So just real quick, if you look at some of the numbers up to date, September, I think for the U.S. Marshals, we're at $687,000 for holds this year. Again, I renegotiated that at the beginning of the term. We also renegotiated the transports. You can see that the numbers, we're transporting a lot of folks all over, so I'm just trying to think if there's anything else.
Transport, is that for marshals and then other counties and?
We do reimbursements for juvenile detention too, so we haul kids up to J D C, we do a reimbursement from the Department of Corrections, so.
If we ever have to go to the trustee unit, is that reimbursed or not?
No.
Okay, is, is there any way to get that reimbursed from the state? The reason I ask, talking to some other.
All the way to the trustee unit from the jail?
Well, I'm saying Bonhom, for example, talking to one of their commissioners, it's almost a daily thing, running their people to the jail, and you're basically fulfilling a state service, you know, because it's a state inmate. I'm not saying, it's not to me the amount or the distance, it's just, again, another example of where the county is doing something for free for the state. It's not like the state does anything for us, you know, is that just something we could look at, you know? Because you've got to run somebody out to the trustee unit, that's somebody who's not on patrol, but you have to call somebody in and, you know, and that, that was my question, so there, there's no way for us to, to get any, you know, refund for that or, or charge the state.
Sometimes the D O C does their own transports. I think in Bonhom is kind of unique because the county jail is right by the prison, so when I used to work over there, that was pretty common, sometimes they have that transition. Not something that we can look at, I mean, definitely. But sometimes, like Eric had said, sometimes doing more might even cost you more in the end.
Sure.
But it's something that we can consider, most definitely. I think for Department of Correction holds, you can see that we, I think, we were at 3,325 bucks. The state legislators last year allow us to bill up to $85 a day now for them. And parole, used to do holds where they would just do 12-hour holds or whatever, so I made sure that we're billing the D O C for a full day because we're feeding them, they're coming to our facility, so we're still getting the 85 even if they do a 12-hour hold or, or whatever.
If you have somebody on a federal detainee, do you charge the marshals for that person?
On a detainee hold? I would have to check into that.
I would check because there's about 178 days that could be charged out.
Yeah, I believe anytime the marshals come in, we're billing, billing them.
So what are we, we're billing, the marshal is what, how much?
Hundred and five a day.
And then the state is paying us?
Eighty-five, and that's in state statute. They passed that last or two legislative sessions ago.
It usually goes until the county gets gouged for years and years and then they raise it a little bit.
Yeah, I think they put that in statute so we couldn't charge more. And like I said, I think at the 2025, we're going to look at raising the rates for the surrounding counties, we just have to notify them that we're going to do that. Bonhom County, obviously, we have $4,760 from them, but we're going to probably raise the rates, probably do 105 at the first of the year is what I'm looking at doing. So the next time I come in, we'll probably just do an approval for you guys to charge the 105.
Is Clay County's jail, do you think that will have any impact on us or what's your thought?
I think with the 44-bed jail, there's a potential that they could house marshals, but I think the location, I think they're going to probably up grow the jail or just enough to fit their needs and maybe some surrounding counties. Because when you do the marshals, if there's, the marshals come and do inspections and stuff, not saying that Clay County wouldn't do it, but the, the bed space that they have of 44 beds isn't, I mean, that's what we contract for is 40 marshals. So I still think we have a pretty good stronghold on that. Also for 24/7, last year, we put in for the 24/7 coordinator grants. It was a $10,000 other grant that the South Dakota Attorney General's Office allows counties to apply for. Obviously, our 24/7 has skyrocketed, so we applied for that grant last year. And so we were granted the grants and we just put in for the application for 2025. So I'm anticipating that we'll get that just because we're.
Using it.
We're use, we use the heck out of it, so.
Do we usually end up in the black for the 24/7 or does that cost the county or what?
The 24/7 program is essentially designed to have the person come in to pay all that stuff.
Costs the defendant.
Yeah, the defendant, yeah. So, I mean, the county does pay some out of it just because you have to have the personnel to be able to monitor that person or these people that are coming in. But it's a D B A, our county jail, so these people aren't even housed, so, you know, you have 100 people on breathalyzers and, so, I mean, there's, there's more good that comes out of it. Now, if you're a smaller county, it probably would make sense, but we have so much people coming in and out of jail and people getting arrested or whatever the case may be, but.
Can, can people go from a county they're not in and go to?
What are you saying over the?
So, so if somebody's on 24/7, do they have to come to Yankton or do they come to the closest facility or how does that work? Can somebody from another county come to our facility or?
Oh, no. Not, not without permission of the.
Yeah, it's got to be.
You have to ask judge if you can, if I can do my 24/7 today, this month and this week in Minnehaha. You don't just show up and blow.
Yeah, yeah, it's got to be pre-approved and the agency's got to accept it as well because it's, it's not uncommon for somebody to go out by the lake area for the weekend, but they're not from here and then they get a DUI and then they're placed on 24/7. And if it's multiple DUIs, they're going to be on 24/7 for a long, longer period of time, but they might be from the Huron area. So B O County might be responsible for the 24/7, but they were just here to have fun, but they got caught, so.
Had too much fun.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Otherwise, you guys got any questions for me?
I make a motion to approve the sheriff's quarterly report.
Motion by Wanda, second by Dan. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Are you all fully staffed now in the jail and?
We're getting closer to the jail, we just have a lot of field training that we have to do. We just want people to listen up on the, on the bookings and stuff. We are trying to promote people from our jails to be a deputy, so we have one, Jordan Mock is in the police academy right now up here. So I think he'll be done November 15th, I believe, that's Friday, November 15th through 12. So we're trying to promote within the agencies just to let our people know that we support them.
Can you let your deputies and your staff employees know how much we appreciate them and just thank you for keeping our community a safe place or?
You bet, and we'll, you'll zoom out to dinner.
That's right.
And as I know, I'm still waiting for my transport name, I haven't, it's not even been built yet, so.
Is that, no, no clue when that's going to come in?
I get an email every 60 days saying they're processing your order.
Has that been a year or it's got to have been?
I came in in February, I think.
Almost, not quite.
Okay, so, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Claims.
Vote. Don't we have to vote?
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
I would move to approve part one of the claims.
No, we've got the minutes.
Minutes.
Motion to approve the October 1st, 2024 minutes.
Second. A motion by Dan, second by Ryan to approve the October 1st, 2024 meeting minutes. So further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Claims.
No, I would reiterate my motion to approve part one of the claims.
A motion by Wanda, second by Don to approve the first set of claims. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Motion, opposed, nay. Motion carries. Get a motion to approve the second set of claims.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Dan, second by Ryan to approve the second set of claims. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
One extension.
One extension, abstention. September 2024 Auditor Treasurer Report, Pool Cash Report.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Wanda.
Second.
Second by Don. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Operation Green Light, give us a short synopsis on that.
Operation Green Light is something I've done every year. It's just an opportunity for counties to show support for veterans in our community who hang up a little banner on the side and put out some, some green lights out there. You know, veterans transitioning off of active duty or from a deployment, they can, they experience pretty high levels of stress and I think this is the very least that we can do to show our veterans this time of year that we care. So I make a motion to support the Operation Green Light resolution.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Wanda to support the Operation Green Light. Further discussion, I'm assuming that we're going to have the light bulbs change here at the, all of, all of our buildings.
We usually just do a banner and then some outdoor lights.
Right, on this building.
Yeah, on this building, and we, we don't go to any other ones. This is visible enough here and so, and then Gary and Rob are already coordinating to work on that and then we usually take some photos and send them to NACO, and I think we have them recognized at least the past couple of years in National Magazine, so it's great, so.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now's the time for our second public comments. Do we have any public comments? Hearing none, public comments is closed. Commissioner updates. Wanda?
No.
Ryan?
Just going to be shooting for that, kind of risked that whole team's trial for the November 7th, I mean, after all the election is over, so give us more time in this room to work that.
Okay. I have a card. Don?
I've got three pages. Well, sure.
All right.
Some G O E meeting, kind of update in the state. There's a lot of things that are going good. I think for the year, from the state standpoint, agriculture's had a top year from the income standpoint, which has affected several areas within the state. The rest of it.
Okay, Don, Dan, what do you got?
I don't have anything.
Okay, get a motion to.
I move to go into executive session for core relief issues pursuant to S D C L 1-25-2 and 28-13 and 28-13.13 as well as contractual matters and personnel issues.
A motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, move into executive session. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
You carry it.
Thanks, everybody.
I'll, I'll, we'll tell, I'll send this up tomorrow.
I thought you all.
But, I mean, but.
We used to say.
You know what I say? When you're talking.
There's been a lot of.
Okay, that's what I thought.
What would they like?
But I was talking.
Yeah, give me a call.
I love it.
Stop by my office.
Sounds good. All right, thank you.
You know where my office is, Randy?
Are you at? It's probably 81.
About 81, north, north town, it's like Old Joe Dean's.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds a weird, I'm in a new building.
They got fallen a pit or a ride out. Okay. My pants are going off. All right, we got that good night.
You too, Randy, thanks.
So, man, you're still getting more obsessive gas.
Yeah, we.
Something got pretty good votes, early voting.
Yeah, we've got about 2,000 already voted and we had today, we had like 270.
You know, I'm doing an election preview story on Saturday. I'm just, I'm just emailing you, giving you a buzz closer to the end of the week, but you surpassed 2,000 somehow. Okay, that's cool. All right.
Yeah, I'm just. Yeah, I check out. Yeah, we set up our. People can see when they come by there. They can watch them on the side of the field.
Can see when they come by there. They can watch them on the side of the field.
And then would you want this chair just stacked?
Yeah.
Yeah. Three? Okay. Stack these two?
Yeah, we'll just put it back over there.
Yeah, sure. Okay, alright.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Anytime. Okay.
Don't have the door shut. Get a lock on back when I know my keys in my desk.
Uh-oh. That wouldn't be good.
Okay, so we can stop right?
Oh, you're starting to sound like you're stuck. I'll be here immediately.
Then they won't be locked, just in my desk.
I know, but you see what I do? We go to the back.
I don't want us out of here.
This motion to come back into regular session, second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay. Four in favor of going back into regular session, one discontent, saying nay. With regard to Yankton County Correlate, I would recommend, I would move that we approve County Welfare Mental Illness Number 240306 in the amount of $863. County Welfare Mental Illness 240307 in the amount of $863. County Welfare Burial 240401 in the amount of $1,250. And County Welfare 21-4-054, which is actually a claim from the year 2021 and somehow it was missed in the 2022 year. And that we deny County Welfare Burial 240402 and the total amount is $3,722.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan. All in favor, further discussion. Jury done, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Wanda. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The jury officially adjourns.